I hear, I hear background noise.
Someone's got a radio TV on.
Cut your TV off, best. Cut your TV off, John Charles.
I don't watch TV. I don't even go to recess anymore, man. I don't play. Right, Fred?
I hear you.
I heard that.
Don't we even play the radio, huh? That's great.
Yeah, I played them old records on the forty-five.
All right.
Right, best?
You say so.
Okay, we're, we're ready.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone and glad that everyone is in good stead. And we will at this time turn it over to our very capable city clerk.
Good morning. This is a pre-meeting of Mobile City Council, Tuesday, October twenty-seventh. We have approval of minutes from October twentieth.
October twentieth minutes? I haven't seen them. That was last week's. When did they come to us?
Oh, they have, they haven't gone there.
Oh, okay.
We'll take them off.
We'll take it off. She didn't do it to you all. Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on October thirty-first from four PM until ten PM on Coomban Street. And um October twenty-ninth through the thirtieth from six-thirty PM until eight-thirty PM and October thirty-first from nine AM until eleven-thirty AM on South Broad Street.
I, I don't have any issue.
Okay. Public hearing today is to publicly declare the structure at four oh four Morgan Avenue a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Is Mr. Dolphin bomb?
Yep.
Yes, he is.
Yes, Mr. Dave's, I'm here.
Okay, have you, has anybody showed up to complain about tearing this down? I know we've had, I mean, we've had years of problems with it. I just want to know if we're going to have anyone objecting to it.
No, sir, I'm, I'm not aware of anyone signing up to speak. However, just a quick background, we, we've had some problems with this property, some criminal harborage issues. And the condition the structure is in today is a result of criminal activity. It's my understanding, it's been reported to me that this was a meth lab that caught on fire and burned the structure. So right now it's vacant and I don't expect the owner to attend. He, he may be facing criminal charges based upon the occurrence of the, the fire.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tear it down. Tear it down.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have one person signed for agenda items, Rich Hill, and he's addressing zero one seven nine three and forty-seven seven six seven and forty-seven seven six eight. Essential COVID items held over forty-five four-four declare the structure at seven-twenty-seven Florida Street Extension a public nuisance in order it demolished. Forty-seven seven six seven and seven six eight are extending to the vacation of a portion of South Conception Street west of Metro Jail and a portion of St. Emmanuel Street east of Metro Jail.
Chris, what we doing?
Those two need to be tabled. We have two ones on.
What, down Concep- on Concepcion Street?
Both of those.
Both. Because they're going to be closures as opposed to vacation. Is that correct?
Right.
Zero one seven nine three authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County for Nevis Road Extension, one point five million.
Okay. If I could address this.
Miss Rich?
Thank you very much. Did everyone get the emails that I sent out yesterday? I just wanted to make sure because I didn't get any confirmation. So if you'll just let me know that you at least received my thought process on this particular agenda item.
Miss, Miss Rich, I, I didn't receive any of your commentary. Could you, could you resend that, please?
I'll be happy to. I, I can't do it this moment because I'm zooming with you, but I will get, make sure you get it. Unless I can leave and bring it back to you, but and I apologize for that if you didn't get it. The idea that we're constructing a road without city standards came as a big surprise to my office because my only conversations have been with city officials on this as of very recent. And that is that I assumed that there would be any street that would be constructed in our city limits would meet the city standards. Nevis is considered a major road. We annexed in the portion of Nevis currently that, right now I sent you photographs for you to review if you weren't familiar. But there's no street lighting. Some of it's four-lane, but I think that might be in the, in the county section. This portions of the cities, I think it's the two lanes, which is what this road will be. Although the right-of-way being secured from the owners of the property is for a hundred feet right-of-way, so that means it is a major road. I was in complete agreement that opening up this leg of Nevis would be helpful for traffic flow as the area continues to grow. I do think that the idea that it will have open ditches, that there will not be lighting, particularly the lighting on a road where there is no other development is, you know, probably not in the, in the motorist's best interest. It, I addressed the county commission yesterday because I learned that it was an agenda item. I understand there have been some changes to the agreement because their attorney pointed it out and I could not hear him very well because we were towards the rear of the, of the room and it's hard to hear people. We know this in our auditorium. And so I would like to know exactly what those changes are because I was encouraged in the packet that we're holding. Unless this has been drawn out, it does say that the road would meet all of the standards or, or codes. And our codes are very clear when someone is developing a street. My office worked with two developers that had to take a dirt road and construct sidewalks, lighting, curb, gutter. It was a simple minor road, so the right-of-way wasn't as long, but the city need those improvements for them to reach what they developed. And they did all of this way past their program, so to speak, but the city would not allow the development unless the street was improved to our standards. And that was the understanding that I went into this. And not knowing what the plans looked like, the plans are almost complete. I think that the county said sixty percent at this time. The land has not been deeded over, so it's not public land yet. But all developers give their rights of way in order to, you know, so that's technically not a gift. It's what they have to do in order to build the road to their parcel. And I hope that you will work with my office and because it is a major road, which means your constituents will certainly be on it. I don't understand the part that goes towards the police jurisdiction. I thought this was directly out to Solly looking at a map. I didn't understand that it might curve some. I was accused yesterday and I, I, I felt really bad about it, that it was a political stance I was taking on the road, whereas I'm not against the road. I'm against the fact that there aren't adequate funding to actually construct it to the codes that our city has. And allowing the county to actually take this contract as, and it's a pay-go for their funding source is not how we do pay-go projects in the city of Mobile. The city of Mobile takes control of those projects. And any roads in West Mobile that I represent now were annexed in. They were constructed to city, to county codes. And that's why lighting is missing and the drainage might be open. So again, this is not the way we do it in the city of Mobile and, and I just would like to slow down if you'll, if you'll kind of step into the position I have, and that is a road that is substandard being built in this day and age. If we could slow it down, I understand that the county's pay-go money does not go away. It's secure and it's a matter of finding other resources. It will not be built for another two to three years. It's not like the contracts are going out. And again, would you want this in your district? Would you proudly point to a road that was not built to the standards that all of the roads in the city of Mobile meet? So but no, the ones that are built today. So I, I, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that there aren't open di- I mean, yes, because we've annexed in, the city has changed. I'm not saying things were fair back in the fifties or sixties. That's why we went into the council form of government. But I just want to concentrate on the fact that we are getting ready to move a road over to the county to build for their standards that do not meet the standards of the city of Mobile. And that was something that I didn't think was even a possibility. So slowing it down does not stop the project by any means. It's just a matter of finding the resources to build it correctly. And I understand those resources would have to double on what's been put together right now with the city's million five and the county's, I think, four point something. So again, it's a total of five point four million, whatever their resources come to. But if I would have known, I would have ejected a lot sooner. My office was asked to work in getting the other half of Pinehurst done in the next cycle of CIP, this, this budget, and that's a million. Maybe I should have been at the table to talk about using CIP, which would be a little bit unusual for road, but might have been, you know, more advantageous at this juncture. But there's always next year for the CIP and for the mayor to look at resources that the city has in surplus. And again, it's a major road and at some point in time, it will have to be widened. It will have to be lit. It will have to have curb and gutter like all our major roads in our city limits. And it is in a new area of town, but that doesn't excuse not building it appropriately. And giving this to the county as opposed to the city taking the lead so that our codes are met.
Would you be, uh, Miss Rich, would you, I hear all you're saying. Would you be amenable to a two-week layover so that you can firm up some more, the, firm up some of the questions that you have and, and be more inclined to move forward?
I would very much like any amount of time the council is willing to give to, to this issue in the sense that the time allows for additional resources to be either managed and set aside or known to the county so that we can do a program that everyone's proud of. So I, I would like any time this council can give because I only learned about this agreement last week when it was on our council agenda. And again, it's, it's not it is, it is my sense that none of us on the council would condone a road built under these conditions in our city limits. There is really no reason to not build to our code because then where do you stop? How do we tell other developers that they, they have to meet codes? You, you can't be, you know, unfair, so to speak. And I've never worked with this city engineering on a program that didn't meet codes for streets.
Miss, Miss Rich?
So anytime, yes, I, I will take whatever time the council is willing to give.
She's saying the same. Uh, we, we, we hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
So I guess the question is, would, would two weeks be sufficient?
I, I think that it, it probably would take more since the road is going to be constructed, but if two weeks is what you suggest.
No, no, we're, we're asking you, ask the council person for that area, what time would you, three weeks?
Well, a month, when will the county scrap the project?
No.
All together? When will they do that? There's got to be a timeline because they've got a big old timeline.
Right. No, they've already done some work towards the project. So the project basically is moving. And when people go to the polls and know this, in next week, they will be voting to add additional funds. That's why I thought it was a, it was a program that would move.
Four weeks.
Okay. That, I'll take that, believe me, because I'm, I'm, my back is up against the wall and I need to also work with our administration to see what they're.
No, I think if, uh, Miss, Miss Rich, if, uh, if we, if we were to, you know, four is, is, is out there. What about a possibility of maybe three weeks?
I feel like I'm fitting with you.
Well, we're, we're trying to work with you.
I think, I, I think if, if there could be, if there can be some information that you could get from the county about the status of, of, of the agreement, so to speak, and understanding where they are in this process. But it's my understanding that it will not be constructed for a number of years, which is why I was under the impression it would take multi-years to get the right amount of funding in place to build it to, to our city codes. It should not be built by the county. That, that's just not how we work with pay-go projects.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
The county attorney is on, Jay Ross, if he wanted to say any, if he wanted to say anything.
Uh, Mr. Ross, a very capable attorney, what commentary would you like to offer to this discussion?
Well, thank you, uh, Council and Miss Lambert. You know, the, the, I think that there may be some lack of communication between the city council and the county and perhaps the city administration with regard to this project. The county has been under the impression that the county would build the road. According to county engineer Brian Kegley, the plans were presented to county administration and the county, city engineer, rather. City administration road was approved in this fashion. We did hear council member Rich's comments yesterday. There has been an agreement circulated between city administration and the county with respect to the funding. If, uh, Miss Rich is correct, if the pay-go is approved next on Tuesday, July, November third, then that would give the money necessary to build the road. Indeed, the road is not curb and gutter and does not have lighting, as, as council member Rich suggests. So we won't build, can't build it unless we have an agreement. So whatever we need to do to try to get there, that's what we will be happy to do. I am told by some in county administration that they prefer the county build it so the city could use its resources in other areas for road construction. But, you know, we, we hear Miss Rich's comments and county doesn't presently have the money available to make it four-lane or build to the city standard is with the curb and gutter and lighting and sidewalks. I will say that there was money in two thousand sixteen, eighteen, pay-as-you-go for this, and there's now more money on the twenty-twenty pay-go or total city cost of roughly four point five, four point three million. City's contribution of one point five gets us to roughly five point five million dollars for the current cost of the road construction. We will get, I will, Miss Rich, I will get from Brian Kegley today, as soon as possible, the county engineer, exactly where we are and some other information from the city, from county engineering will give you a better picture of how we got to where we are today. Then we'll do what we need to do to work with the city council to figure out how we try to make it.
Can I, may I say something, um, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Ray, may I say?
Yes. Now, I'd just like to point out that the, the city and the county have been working on this project for many years. Uh, both the county and city engineers have, they've done all the research. They've got it planned out real well. It matches with the existing Nevis road. There are challenges that can be explained by Nick Amberger with the terrain out there. But there, this is not a substandard road. It meets all standards. It meets all codes. Uh, there's not a city ordinance that says that all roads have to be made to a certain city standard. There was a feel-good resolution years ago about city streets. The county's been a great partner in this. You know, this road, this project started out at one level. Uh, they said, you know, they approached us if we could give a certain amount of money, let's say a million and a half dollars, that they were gonna put their money up. Then when the cost escalated, the county agreed that they would pay that increased cost. I mean, truly, they have been a terrific partner in this. You know, at this time, we have some surplus funds available to do this. It's like a lot of projects. You know, you can't do them without the funding. There is no guarantee that the funding to build the road, even as designed, will be able to be built into the future if we don't do it now because the funds may not be available. Uh, it is, uh, if you would put curb and gutter on this, the, all of a sudden, this project becomes cost prohibitive for the city and for the county. I'd like to also point out that this is within the city limits. It bisects the largest undeveloped track of land that we have developed. You know, it, it could lead to having as many as a thousand houses on it. Uh, based on the size of the property, depending on the size of the house. There is nowhere else we can go, you know, to grow the population within the existing city limits. And so, you know, as we look at that, when you think about one of the biggest challenges we have as a city is declining population. And for us to say we're not going to build a road that is, well, it is standard. It meets all the standards that we currently have. It opens up an area that can be developed for the future. And we cannot assure that you will, as I said, that we'll have the money available going forward. You know, we'll be glad to take a, a two-week break on this and get all the information so that it's better understood because some of the, the information that's being given to Miss Rich's office obviously is in conflict with the information that the administration has. So we'll be glad to report back to you. Uh, because of the election next week, I would suggest that we put it off at least to, to the following week, but I don't think it should be delayed any further than that. So there's a lot more I could say, but I know that other city councillors would like to weigh in. But we would appreciate you, your consideration of putting it off for two weeks, at which time we will be able to thoroughly vet you that this is a good thing for the city of Mobile. And there is political posturing going on.
Well, uh, Mr. Dave's and then Miss Gregory?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I have, I'll start off by saying I have no objection to a two-week hold on this. But, but I would just like to set the record straight. There are a number of highly-traveled streets in this city that don't have curb and gutter, have open ditches on either side of them. The two that come immediately to mind are Highway ninety, Government Boulevard from Pine Hill West and, and Dolphin Street between the hospital and McGregor Avenue doesn't, has curbing, has curb, but no gutter and has open ditches. And it just seems like to me, if we're going to go out and spend a lot of money on curb and gutter and ditch and cover in ditches, that we ought to do it on highways that receive a lot of traffic rather than on a brand-new one that'll meet, that'll meet standard. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dave's, Miss Gina Gregory, and then we'll go to the distinguished general from the first district.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Jay Ross joining us and providing some more information as well as the mayor. Because I think we need to make sure that we have all the information available. And I know Mrs. Rich has a lot of questions. It sounds like, unless I just didn't understand, that if we don't go ahead and make the decision to go forward with the money that is available now and do the road as is currently designed and being tweaked as we speak, sounds like, that we might, might not be able to do it at all. Because if adding the extras for, for lights, curbs, gutters, bike lanes, you know, all of that, it sounds like the price goes up so much that it just may not happen. I understand the desire to do that, certainly. And I know Ziegler was brought up last week, but Ziegler was a state-led project. I mean, the city wound up doing it, but it was a state project and the state had lots of requirements in order to provide funding to do Ziegler, which is why we had to redo, redraw, redesign to put in the bike lanes and the sidewalks. If it had not been that way, don't know that we ever would have had that. But, um, um, I understand the reasoning for having the county do the project rather than the city because we have so much going on now that, as you all know, we have trouble getting projects out the door, period. So the county probably has more time and manpower and that sort of thing in order to get the project done, which I can understand from Nick Amberger's point of view certainly makes sense. So at any rate, I'm inclined to agree with, with the layover. I mean, if two weeks is enough, great. If it gets, when it comes back on our agenda, if we're still not ready to go, then, you know, we can lay it over again. And in the meantime, hopefully Mrs. Rich can work with both the county and the city administration to have her questions answered, get more information and feel more comfortable with, you know, the direction that this is going.
Uh, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. President. It has been said that this project will not be completed in less than two years. So it seemed like maybe two or three weeks, a month, two months, project not going in the way. Definitely do nothing. We, everything is just being calculated, but, but that, that, that's not what my concern is this. There are five point five million dollars somewhere waiting to be applied to Nevis Road. How you get there first is a mystery to me. I've been digging for fun for St. Stephen Road for twenty-four years. No valleys, no curves, no gutters, inadequate, inadequate sidewalks, no proper lighting, the whole thing. We're not talking about some some street that's going nowhere. Talking about US Highway four five that starts in Mobile, Alabama and goes to Chicago, Illinois. A major thoroughfare, major street. We can't get the funding for it. So all of a sudden, it, it comes up on the agenda. Uh, one point five million for Nevis Road. They already got four point five million, uh, four million waiting on them somewhere else. And they're waiting for us to vote on pay-go. They're gonna put some more money in. And I can't get a dime. I hope you see the position I'm in. And whoever want to call this political can say what they want to say. You got to refute what I have to say. I've been crying this ever since I've been on the council. There will be a, have refused to put a dime of the city's tax money on St. Stephen Road. And I'm saying it's time for the city to step up to the plate on St. Stephen Road. It's not a stepchild. You birthed it. Fix St. Stephen Road.
And I, and I agree, St. Ste- I share have a St. Stephen's Road, and I would be remiss to say that it certainly is in need. Uh, and I'm working with whoever would work with my county commissioner, Governor Ivey, even President Trump. I, I would work even with him in order to get some money to fix St. Stephen's Road. So I'm with you on that respect, Mr. Richardson. It, it appears that it's the consensus of the majority of us that we lay this item two, over for two weeks. Uh, Miss Rich, if you can get, work diligently to get your answers. So that hopefully when we, when this item is brought back up, we will have an opportunity to move forward progressively. So that hopefully, when we, when this item is brought back up, we will have an opportunity to move forward progressively. And then if not, I hope the county will take all that they want to put in Nevis Road. And the city will take all that they want to put in Nevis Road and put it right down St. Stevens Road. So, so we got two good options. And our project is shovel-ready in many respects. So I'm hopeful that this works. We've got, we'll have two weeks. And please keep us updated, Council Lady Rich.
Okay, if I could comment to answer the mayor's concerns about it being political. My office just got the agreement. I was not at the table. I'm trying to understand why the county is taking the lead other than the fact that it allows them to circumvent what would be done if a developer or if the city was the lead engineering capacity because of what our subdivision laws are all about. And that's where the street agreements come in. Mayor, I hope you're still listening. I, I see, I see your, I don't see you, but I see that you're present. Could you give me an indication that there might be a willingness to work with the owner of the properties? Since I, I hear what you're saying about the future of that property. But if, if we were not interested in seeing this done as a way to grow home ownership in the city of Mobile and to increase our population, the developer owners of the property would come forward, get their, their property subdivided, and then the city would require certain standards to be met in order to get to their property and the rights of way would be secured by the city. And I explained all that in my, in my message that I wrote yesterday. It, has that ever been an, a thought process or a way to achieve a better and a more significant development on the parcel that brings so much development forward? Because it's private development. It's not public development, to my knowledge. I don't think the city owns any of that property out there. So if, if I could get a sense of that, that would be very helpful. Because that's, that's a track that I thought the city should take in working with the developer. And we, and the city and the county do incentives, but we don't do it at 100%. So, and then don't build something that isn't to standard in our city limits.
We'll be glad to give you all the information that we have. This is the county made the deal with the property owners. I'm not engaged in what that deal is. I've not seen the deal with the property owners. Because this is, was a county-led project, but the city is the beneficiary of it. I mean, we both are. And so, but yes, you know, we have a planning commission, you know, that goes through all those, making sure that the subdivision will be built according to the codes that exist. And if it's three years out, you know, I don't see where a commitment from me today really makes any difference because the planning commission will handle things like the city handles everything. You know, our commitment right now is to make sure that everybody understands, you know, the, the standards of this road, how we got to where we are, and, you know, what's at risk if we don't do it.
I guess I don't see the risk as much as I see the lack of proper codes and safety mechanisms that an urban area puts in a street. So I'll rest this now and be glad for the extra weeks and look forward to working with your office, Mayor Stimson.
That's, that's great.
Thank you.
Please keep us updated, Councilwoman Rich. Madam City Clerk?
08794795, approved purchase order to Burno Washington Inc. for one ambulance stretcher and to Auto Nation for, for two, for 250 pickup truck. 08796, approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales for two, for F-450 flatbed dump truck. 09797, reallocate monies from Capital Project Village of Spring Hill sidewalks. Advertising fees to tap Project Oshel Road sidewalks from Myrtle Wood to I-65. 21798, authorized contract with Steve Thornton for sidewalks along Oshel Road between Myrtle Wood and I-65. 60, 805, 806, 807 are approved for renovation to sell property adjacent to Magnolia Road off course. To sell property off Dog River Road and to sell property at, on Carol Plantation Road. COVID-19 items being introduced for the first time. 88037, ordinance demon property at 2318 St. Stevens Road, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale to AHM Investment. 8833038, ordinance demon property located at East I-65 Service Road, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale to Deaf Real Estate.
Can I ask a question about that one? Excuse me, to the administration. Was that advertised for 30 days? I thought that just came to council. And I could be confused because we've seen a lot of parcels coming and going. But on that one, I, I was, thought we had just approved to allocate the sale.
That was last week. It was west of I-65. This one's east of I-65.
Okay, when did we, when did we approve that one to? Has it met the 30 days?
It was authorized to be put up for sale on July 7th.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I, I just want to make sure.
88039, ordinance demon property at 320 Dolphin Street, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale to Jan Irwin. 28, I'm at 21811, authorized contract with Ica Construction Corporation for Memson Park Synthetic Turf Field. A $1,405,522. 21812, authorized contract with Ica Construction Corporation for a tricentennial park splash pad improvement, $249,960. 40813, declare destruction for, oh, for Morgan Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished. 47814 and 815 are approving the closing of a portion of South Jefferson Street and St. Emmanuel Street.
Chris, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Chris, why are we, why are we, why do, why are these resolutions on here? I mean, it's not, not required, is it?
Closing?
The closing, yeah.
Not required. Close any road he wants to.
Not unless we vote.
I, I, no, no, this, this is a temporary administrative action.
For nine days. They could only go for nine days, John.
Yeah. I don't know what the law, I don't know what the law says, but I think the consensus of the council, John, has been that is, if it's gonna be longer than about 90 days, that he needs to bring it, the mayor needs to bring it to the council.
But the difference between consensus and law.
I understand. And we're setting a precedent.
The council controls the streets and property of the city.
Ain't no doubt about it.
And certainly, the administration could temporarily close streets to do work or whatever needs to be done. But this is gonna be an indefinite time period. It may be forever.
I took your opinion, but I, I still hadn't heard though. Is, is there a law that, that puts?
There is a law that the council controls the streets.
How about you share that with me?
I will.
Can we go ahead and take that up today?
I hope so.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, so we, we'll just take those last three up today then. If that's okay with everybody.
Um, no, wait, what about the last?
Uh, do we, do we need to take the last two up today?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, no, I, or we've, there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about this.
Yeah, but still, we, we changed it from, it looks like we're running it through. And, and I haven't seen the law. I'd, I'd like to see it.
I think, I think.
I'm gonna withhold. Just, I'll kill the discussion. I withhold.
Okay.
Mr. Aldis, can you provide, Mr. Dave?
I'm gonna withhold 14 and 15, but no, no hurry. Next week. We'll get it next week. There's no hurry to do that.
And, and I would tend to agree about closing for traffic management as opposed to this is construction. And so there might be some understanding that the council should be aware that the site and also the timeline on it, that it's, I don't think, well, with a closure, the city could take it back. But did we, did we structure it so that we said we would take it back if they moved? In other words, does it have more permanency because it involves building a program that better suits the needs of the public at this, at the jail? So there's more nuances to this than managing traffic and keeping people safe with the amount of traffic all the time. That does not come to the city and council managing traffic flow. That's, that's not our jobs. So.
We were told that they were not going to construct anything across the street, the roadway. They're gonna be doing some construction, but not across the roadway.
Right.
So, but wouldn't matter, wouldn't bother us. But it's gonna be laid over, so. Laid over. It's gonna be beaten to death.
Madam City Clerk?
Announcement?
Any announcements from members of the council? And announcements from the administration?
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Ms. Gregory?
We've talked recently about the short-term rentals. And Chris is going to put the amended version of the ordinance on the agenda next week. He has sent that out again to the point of contact for all of the Airbnb folks that we spoke to. You remember, they sent us a point of contact so that we could send it to them. So far, we haven't heard anything from them. As I recall, most everybody, or everybody on the call with us at any rate, seemed to be okay with just requiring a business license. And that was as far as we were talking about taking it, and that's what this amended ordinance does. So if you all will take a look at that and make sure you don't have any other questions about it, we'll just look forward to seeing that then on the agenda next week. Chris had reminded me that we did need to go ahead and take this up so that all of these business owners would know that they had to get the business license, you know, with the new year coming and everything. So it was a timing issue ordinarily and would have come back on our agenda at the end of November. So we're just speeding things up a little bit. We have heard nothing from them, no suggestions, no complaints. So we may as well move forward with it.
Now, did I, did I miss something? Which, which ordinance are we talking about here?
This is the short-term rentals, you know, the Airbnbs?
Oh, yeah, Airbnb. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The food trucks, my understanding is that, Chris, you're working on revised ordinance on that. And maybe you and I should talk a little bit about that.
I hope that.
I think, I think he'd be willing to do that, Joe.
Yes.
I, I would hope that we're not, you know, just going by comments. We, we need to get those two together. The brick and mortar and the trucks need to get together on that and, and work it out, something that's amenable and.
Well, that's what. Mr. Williams, that really is what's been happening. We've got representatives from brick and mortar like David Rass. We've got representatives from food truck like Arturius Walker and a consortium, a Mobile Food Truck Association that have been very active. And so they, they are very vocal at the same.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I haven't received very many comments other than from the Downtown Mobile Alliance. And one other fellow sent in a short comment. Yes, I can work with Mr. Davis, and we are hoping to receive consensus-type comments and suggestions from the, the two groups getting that yet.
Didn't Scott Tindall and Arturius Walker participate in your last committee meeting?
We did hear the comments at the meeting. There hasn't been anything since.
They're fringe, fringe comments. I mean, really, it was, it was, there was a lot of things thrown out. And it was my understanding that committee ended with, let's give this thing 30 days and, and y'all get together and, and work something out, bring it back to us, not let us dream it up and send it out again. Now, this could go on forever if we dream something up.
Well, I think there was, that, that was clearly the charge that was given to them, was to see if they could come up with something. But, but I'd also say that there, that, it, that there seems to be a lot of, let me see. I, I think, John, that, I certainly thought that your suggestion about designated spots downtown.
Good idea.
What was a, was a good idea.
More of a approach of how you can operate rather than how you can't operate. And I'm looking for those guys to come back to us.
Well, if they don't, we'll have to dream up something ourselves.
And if I could call everybody's attention, Mr. President, to paragraph two of the ordinance that would close, excuse me, the resolution, I, I assume, that will close a portion of St. Emmanuel Street. It's down at the bottom and it's, it says that the street closure as above said shall remain effective until further action by the city council. You know, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed which paragraph I was on. Hold on. It's paragraph three. And it says, during such time as the street closure remains effective, building setback requirements and other requirements relating to the construction of improvements over, across, and within the old, the aforesaid public right-of-way shall be inapplicable. May encroach, I skipped ahead, and may encroach upon, across and over right-of-way of the portion of St. Emmanuel Street closed hereby. That says they can build on it. That says they, they can build over it. And so maybe it's good that we held it over for a week or I'm, so we all can understand what it says.
Applicable mean, mean it can happen.
Inapplicable.
It won't happen. Applicable mean it will.
Requirements for building setback.
That's applicable, not inapplicable.
You need to read it, Fred, because I guarantee you, you don't know what it says. And, and I, in this case, it says they can build across, on, over, and beside, and they can, and they have no setbacks.
And that's applicable, not inapplicable.
You need to read the paragraph. You don't know, you don't know it.
You're ready to read.
Read the paragraph. Chris will tell you. You don't have to.
Any other announcements from members of the council? From the administration? Not, we will see each other at 10:30.